This is the Bennington Select Board Meeting, Monday, November 28, 2016. We're gathered at the Bennington Firehouse. I'm Tom Jacobs. I'm Chair of the Board at this point. This is the last meeting of the month of November. Before we get started, I'd like my colleagues to introduce themselves. Maybe Donald.
Good evening. My name's Donald Campbell.
Hello, I'm Jeanne Jenkins.
Hiya, Michael Keane.
I'm Jim Carroll.
And my name's Jean Connor.
And Justin Corkman, I don't see is present. I haven't heard from Justin. Stuart?
I'm Stuart Hurd, Town Manager, and Linda Bermudez, Records Clerk.
Thank you, colleagues. Thank you one and all. What we would like to start with is the Pledge of Allegiance. If we could all stand and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the fire and the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, created in the firstborn, of God.
Thank you. All of us have received the minutes of the November 14 meeting. We were all in attendance. We have the warrants that have been also circulated and I have anticipating their acceptance, prepared to signature. Would someone move that the consent agenda be adopted?
I'll move that second.
Any other discussion questions?
Just a spelling correction on the dentist's name on page two, close to the bottom. I believe it's Carmack?
I think it is.
Carmack?
Yes, I think so.
Okay.
Thank you.
I wanted to make sure they got credit.
Great. You have credit for the corrections. Are there any other corrections or additions? Hearing none, all in favor of the consent agenda as presented, signify by aye.
Aye.
That's six in favor of the consent agenda. As is our practice, we do reserve time for citizens to address the Board relative to matters that are not already on the agenda for discussion. We don't have a heavy agenda tonight, so any citizens that would like to share their thoughts, comments, concerns, opportunities for the Town of Bennington, please feel free to come up and identify yourself and speak to the mic. And if not, I'll do a quick dance and we'll go right on to the agenda. Anyone like to speak? Again, it's right after Thanksgiving holiday and the agenda reflects that fact and we're still suffering the effects of too much turkey and the like, but the matters that we have before us are important. And if there are no citizens, let's get right into the Homeless Coalition discussion with Chris Oldham. Thank you, Chris.
Good evening.
How are you tonight?
Great.
Good.
Thank you very much for inviting me to fill the time.
No, it's not exactly that. It's much more than that.
Yeah. I'm actually really excited to be here tonight because there's so much going on at the Coalition. And any chance that I get to share, we try to take advantage of that. So is there any specific thing that you want me to touch on or do you want me to give you a spiel of?
No spiel, just conversation, but I can tell you that, you know, we have observed the activity relative to the increase in the new facility, which is going to significantly increase opportunities for providing housing. It might be helpful to, by way of background, for the observing public as well as the Board, just to talk about the philosophy of the Coalition and what is the goal, not only to provide a safe house overnight, but what is there?
Sure. Well, I started in this role in March, so just a little over a year ago. And in that time period, we've gone through a significant transition period. We started with three staff members and we will be up to 14 in the next couple of weeks. And we also went from sort of a place that just offers a bed to a full-scale professional program. So to give you a little background, the Coalition has been in existence since 2000. And they offer short-term emergency housing for families and individuals who are homeless in Bennington County. Currently, we operate four programs out of three facilities. Actually, right now, it's four facilities because we're in the middle of transitioning into, or out of one into another. But we offer a day program that currently is out of 250 North Street. And that is an opportunity for homeless individuals to come in off the streets to gain access to food, bathroom, kitchen facilities, case management, and basically just to get out of the weather. In the evening, we operate an emergency shelter for homeless individuals. Right now, we hold up to six. And I'll talk a little bit about the program specifically first. When I started, there was a system in place where folks come into the shelter and in order to get a bed, they have to, they had to line up. So they were not guaranteed a bed. So when the beds were full, it was a first come, first served basis. And if they didn't get a bed, they were basically out of luck, unfortunately. So one of the first things that we did was take a look at who we're serving and what services we have to offer and make any kind of changes that needed to be made. The first change was to get rid of that line, first come, first served basis. First of all, when folks are lining up to get into a homeless shelter, they are on display. So folks who are driving by and seeing a line of folks trying to get into a homeless shelter, it basically says, hey, I'm homeless, and it does something to one's dignity. So we also found at that time that folks from out of the area utilize the shelter often. Folks from the Albany area, the Berkshires, or just passing through. And that was basically because they had a chance to get into the shelter. One of the things that we did to kind of localize our client base was to introduce a mandatory program. So those who have no desire to stay in Bennington, to reestablish themselves, once they realized that they had to take part of a program, they generally left and they went off to somewhere else. I really want to make it a point that the Bennington Coalition for the Homeless is now more than just a bed. We are a full-scale program. So what that includes is financial literacy, employment readiness, peer-to-peer counseling, nutrition. We have a new nutrition program that we call Cooking Outside the Box that basically shows our guests how to prepare inexpensive meals that include an array of ingredients and not just out of a box or out of a can. The idea is to give our participants the tools that they need to maintain and sustain permanent housing when they graduate from our program. When they were lining up initially, a lot of times, we weren't able to work with one client for a long period of time because they got a bed, say, on Monday, and they may not, they're not guaranteed a bed at that point. So we probably wouldn't see them again for another week or so. So we instituted a new system we call Rolling Admission. So it is still a first come, first served basis. However, when you're in, you're in. As long as you are following a program and you're complying with our rules, your bed is secure for the next night. So what that has done is significantly reduce the time of homelessness for our individuals because we are now able to work with them on a one-on-one basis regularly. So that's something that we decided to implement first and foremost. With that comes a degree of volunteers and staffing. So we had to pop up the amount of staff that we had and also incorporate other entities, partnerships in town. For instance, our financial literacy program is provided to us by the Vermont State Employees' Credit Union. They have folks that will come in on a monthly basis to do workshops and then they will also work with them on an individual basis to address their immediate needs privately. So over time, we have been able to increase the number of folks that we serve because the time that they're homeless is decreased because of these programs, because of our new program. We also operate a family shelter known as the Thatcher House that houses eight households at a time. They also partake in our programming and they have their own unit. So they're living with us for about three to four months, which, by the way, is the amount of time that a single individual tends to work with us as well before being permanently housed.
How long, how long again? Chris, how long, how long again?
Between three and four months. So it really depends on the situation. Every homeless situation is very unique. So it really depends on, you know, if someone comes in with a job, with an income, we are usually able to get them housed pretty quickly as opposed to, say, a single mother who is fleeing a domestic violent situation, who has no job, no income, and we need to kind of start from scratch with her. So like I said, every situation is very unique. But we do strive for a three to four month period, and it has been rather successful. Last year, we served 175 households. 60% of those we serve are children, and that still is the case right now as we move forward into the new quarter. We currently have 18 households on the waiting list of those trying to get into our Thatcher House program. Lastly, we have the new program, which started October 1st. That's at the McCall Street property. That is called Unlocking Recovery, and it's one of a kind in the area. That house has four apartments, and it's a long-term housing program. So those who are living there are families with at least one member in recovery. The idea is to help break down some of the barriers that folks dealing with various addictions are dealing with. So we decided that a longer-term program works a little better than a three to four month program. So typically, they will be with us for about a year. We are working closely with the Turning Point of Bennington and the Hawthorne Center. So those families who are in that program have a significant amount of services wrapped around them. We deal with the housing, the case management, and the life skills and enrichment programming. Hawthorne Center helps us with the medical side of things, and the Turning Point Club offers the sober social activities and meetings and groups. So that in a nutshell is what we're dealing with for programming. Also, we are in the process of moving into a new property, 966 Main Street. Right now, it's known as 966 Main. We purchased that property in September, and we're now in the process of bringing it up to code, which is one issue that we had at the current shelter, was not compliant. So when we did have folks who had disabilities, we were unable to serve them in a dignified manner. So I would say a week or two after I took the role as a Director, we decided that an alternative to that shelter is absolutely necessary. So after a year or so of looking for the right property, we did find one in the right zone, went through the DRB process, and we just finished out the permitting process, which took us a little longer, it pushed our start date a little further on. So right now, we are in construction phase. The site work that the DRB asked us to complete is complete. That is the paving and the wall, the wall, the fence around the backside of the property. And now we're in also the ramp that leads to the front door. Those are the things that the DRB asked us to do. So that part is complete. At this point, we're working on the sprinkler system and the bathroom is getting a complete cut job. It's going to be brought up to an ADA accessible status, and we're also doing some cosmetics in the house. That project is costing us about $70,000. And we hope to, I think the million-dollar question is, when are you opening? And we don't really have a date yet. The goal was to open before the snow flies because we do turn down between eight and 10 individuals on a nightly basis. So the sooner we are in there, the better. So at this point, I was just there this afternoon, we're still about a week or two from, probably closer to two to three weeks before we can actually open that facility.
And where is this, 966?
966 Main, yep.
Any landmarks nearby that would give a better indication?
Well, we're just before the bypass, just down below the bypass.
Across from Cryon's.
I've got an idea.
Cryon's Bakery's right across.
Oh, yes, yes, of course.
I'm surprised that you didn't know that.
I did know that. I just forgot.
Anyway, so that will, a facility will allow us to increase our, the number of folks that we're able to serve to 16. And it also offers ample space for classrooms and workshops for our programming. And we'll even have a shop for folks to come in to pick up clothes or personal care products or bedding in that facility as well. So that is the abridged version of the Coalition at this point in time.
That's a great, great question. Just I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues, but just before you get there, as far as your financing, your, where do you get your finance or your funds for operation of the facility?
I'm still trying to figure that out.
Okay.
So last year, we finished the year at $312,000. The new budget for this year is $471,000. The significant increase really doesn't have much to do with the property. In fact, we're saving expenses by moving because we're renting the current location. It's a triple net lease and it's a significant amount. So with this new mortgage, we have been able to reduce our monthly payment in half. We were able to raise and save $30,000 at the time of closing. We purchased the building for $150,000. We put $30,000 and we mortgaged 120 for the next 20 years. So that's...
Breaking down your budget, where are the funds derived from besides the Town of Bennington, obviously?
Yeah, so the state of Vermont gives us a grant every year that is about a third of our budget. We received a little bit of an increase this year because what the state of Vermont is trying to do is move away from motel vouchers, which has become sort of an issue. Last year, the state spent about $500,000 in motel vouchers in Bennington County. And when the shelter is full, that's when someone would seek a motel voucher. So with us moving into the new property and expanding our capacity, that does exactly what the state is looking for programs like ours to do, which is come up with an alternative to motel vouchers. The motel vouchers save lives to the point where it does get folks off of the street and into a room for the night, but it's only a Band-Aid fix. It does not get to the root of the homeless issue. If anything, it kind of prolongs it. So in our circumstance, with the new program, programming that we have in place and the increased number of beds, we are that alternative. So we were able to get $191,000 from the state this year as opposed to, I think it was $130,000 that we received last year. That money comes from GA Housing. So basically, the money that is spent on motel vouchers, we were able to get some of that in exchange for more space.
Do you have to demonstrate anything to be eligible for that besides space?
Do we have to?
Yeah, you know, what are the qualifications? You know, with the motels, we know there's just the door and a bed. Do you have to demonstrate that you have a viable program to continue to expect that?
Yeah, I mean, when I wrote the grant, a lot of what we included was the programming, and that's, that's one of the reasons why we were chosen to have that increase is because we were offering more than just a bed. And we were able to increase the number of beds. The other thing, too, is we do receive town funding that's based on voters, in some cases, in other towns across the county. It's based on the Select Board's decision. We also receive about $56,000 from HUD to operate the Unlocking Recovery program. And the rest of it is fundraising and grant writing and donations. So we have to raise about $120,000 to get us to the end of the fiscal year.
So we have a balanced budget?
We did last year. We had a little bit more than a, we had an increase last year, a surplus, because we were anticipating the new building and having to put money down. I'm not sure if that surplus will be there at the end of this year, but I'm trying like heck.
Well, because, you know, just by way of history, prior to your coming into the position that you're in now, there had been some questions about the quality of the budgeting process, but it appears from what we have gleaned the last couple of years, two years, that with your leadership, that there has been a real concerted effort to have a realistic and balanced budget.
Yeah.
Duly audited.
Absolutely. I mean, we are audited every year, and I also work very closely with Aero Solutions at a White River Junction. They do all of our back office, our payroll. No check is written without their hands in it. So it's a very organized, transparent program. We also just finished our state and private audit and passed with flying colors.
Great.
In fact, they were really impressed with how things look now compared to four years ago when they were running a significant deficit. So we're really proud of that.
You should be. Go ahead.
I'm chomping at the bit.
Go ahead, yeah.
I just want to say, first of all, wow, Chris, at what you've done. Okay.
Can you hear me?
Just, I'm amazed. You know, one of the things that I heard over and over again in the years that I had my card, and I heard this from many people who disparaged the homeless shelter, and the phrase that they used was, "If you build it, they will come." But what you've done, and it makes me kind of emotional, is that you've instituted programs to get these people not only out of homelessness, but out of poverty. So for those critics of, of taking care of these people, you've put it right there in their face, and you've done it with action and intelligence and with programs that are going to prevent these people from falling further into poverty. And I applaud you, and I'm so grateful. And I'm glad that you're here tonight to talk about what it is that you've done. And as far as the hotel vouchers, I think you and I spoke about this earlier, or several months ago, and I invited you to at least explore it, and that is purchasing some of the hotels where these hotel vouchers are receiving benefits and instituting the same sort of programs and requirements that you do with your homeless shelter. I mean, Stu, I think you could probably vouch for this, but how much police activity is there up at these places where hotel vouchers are indulged? Considerable.
Well, it can be. It may be cyclical, but yes, there is police activity in those situations.
Well, we do run into, I appreciate your words because we work very, very hard, and I can't take all the credit for it. We have a team that is totally dedicated to this cause. And as far as I'm concerned, we wouldn't have been able to make the leaps and bounds that we have without a strong base of employees. With that said, the motels, I do tend to think that once the state starts pulling back motel vouchers, that some of the motels in town will have to change the way they do business. And the idea of purchasing a motel is, has always been appealing to me. You know, there, all of our properties, with the exception of the long-term facility, are monitored basically 24 hours a day. And in the new facility, we do have staff on premise. So we linked our video cameras to all of our properties. All of our staff members can chime in at any point to kind of see who's coming and going. We also have a very, very strict guest policy. This is not a place where people can just kind of hang out and, you know, do whatever. This is, we are establishing a productive environment in each one of our properties. We have a hand-up approach as opposed to a hand-out approach. And I think that resonates with a lot of our donors and the community, that we're not that typical homeless shelter that, you know, in the inner cities where people line up and they, you know, they're drunk and they're, you know, they fight or whatever. You know, we're really trying hard to afford the opportunity to those who come to us, whatever that opportunity might be. So some of the things that we're also looking at is a new type of homelessness, those who are underemployed. We have actually the six that are, of the six that are at the shelter tonight, four of them work full-time, making minimum wage, and they lost their housing because they're not making enough money. That's something that the Coalition hasn't really seen in the past. So in a sense, you know, the underemployment is becoming a burden on the homeless shelters. We're also seeing an influx of homeless veterans, and I'm not talking about the Vietnam veterans. I'm talking about the veterans that are just coming back over. They have services that are attached to them, a little bit more than others, but we're seeing a large increase in that, too. So whenever I speak in to groups, I really try to hammer home the fact that homelessness has no face. So when you're talking about a homeless shelter, I want people to start understanding that it is the veteran, the disabled, the person leaving a toxic environment at home, the educated, the employed. And yes, it is true that some of the folks that we see are held captive by their mental illness or their addiction, but they still deserve the same dignity that the rest of us deserve. So that's, when we start working with our clients, our approach is that we meet them where they're at, and then we create a program that works for them.
Right, but more to my point, Chris, with respect to the hotels and motels that currently cater to transients, have you discussed or approached either one of, or any one of these places that are getting motel vouchers?
We have in passing. You know, it really all comes down to money. If someone wants to give the Coalition a half a million... If someone wants to give the Coalition a half a million dollars, um, then that's something that we can certainly work on. Um, right now, we, our focus was to identify the issues that the Coalition was facing then and, um, that, that was immediate. Um, in doing so, we were able to reach the goal of purchasing our own property and expanding and better meeting the need. The next step is to also start taking a look at how we, um, operate the, the family shelter. Um, we know that the, the current situation is not a good one, um, mainly because we are housing families in efficiency apartments, um, that are meant for basically a single individual. Um, that's just not good enough, and I know that we can do much better. Um, so the idea of, um, purchasing a motel or building a new building that, that, um, is, that better meets our needs is on the table next. Um, I don't know what that's going to look like. Um, it's going to take a lot of players, but, um, the next step is to better meet the needs of our homeless families. The fact that we have eighteen, uh, households trying to get into our shelters is unacceptable. Um, so the other piece of that, that we are looking forward into, to working on are the, the folks that we know are out there who can't be part of our program for whatever reason. That might be because we kicked them out. That might be because they choose that they don't want someone telling them how they should budget their money, or, um, you know, they, they might have some other issues. So the reality is, is we have several hundred people in Bennington County who don't seek our services, who are homeless and who are literally living under bridges and in parks. We see them all the time. Um, so it is unfortunate, uh, that we aren't equipped yet to, to help folks that are in those circumstances. Um, and I don't know what it looks like yet, but I know that a hundred and eighty-day period where motel vouchers are issued, uh, maybe we need to start talking, talking about, um, a temporary or a, a, um, a shelter that's open, a warming shelter, other towns have them, but, um, I don't want to get into that at this point because it's really just thoughts, but.
I have just one final, uh, question, uh, both for Stu and for you, and that is, uh, how many units do you own or does a, uh, homeless shelter have? That is to say, how many people does it serve?
Okay, so, um, when we are in full operation at nine sixty-six Main, um, we will be able to serve a total of sixty-five individuals.
No, I'm not talking about just that one building. I'm talking about the other buildings.
I'm not talking about, yeah. I won't be able to get sixty-five in nine sixty-six, but sixty-five total for all of our properties will be able to have, serve sixty-five people on any given night.
All right. And my question for Stu in, in contrast, because, you know, I've heard it many times that, uh, you know, people believe that these homeless shelters are, um, attracting the less desirable. How much police activity do we have at, uh, these shelters?
I, I don't think we have very much at all. I'm not, I'm not aware of any, and I can speak from a personal experience. We are a neighbor to the McCall Street property, and since the Homeless Coalition has been in charge there, it's been an extremely good neighbor.
And I just want to, uh, finish my thoughts by saying that, you know, when I was growing up, um, we never had much. Um, and whenever my brothers and sisters and I got a little uppity and thought we were a little bit better than, uh, our neighbors, my father and mother's response was, "There but for the grace of God, go I." And I just want to remind people of that. Nobody asked to be poor. Thanks.
Thank you very much. And, and Stu, I really appreciate the good neighbor comment because that is definitely one thing that we strive to be. And I can actually probably tell you, not off the top of my head, but, um, in another conversation of how many times the police have been involved, um, I think that we have a very good relationship with the police, um, and, uh, it, the, the calls have been very few in any of our properties, but, um, I can give you an example that we had, um, the police, um, come over just to do a sweep with the dog. Uh, one of the things that we really want to make sure is that our properties are free of drugs. Um, and not that we had any, um, thought that, um, any drugs were in the shelter, the idea was to make it known that we are a zero-tolerance, um, facility. So when we asked, um, an officer to bring a dog over, it was more or less to do a sweep to let, um, the folks know that, um, we are on top of that. So, um, I, I actually can't say enough about the, um, the police here in town and the support that we have from them.
That's great, Chris. Gene.
Um, thank you very much for your presentation. You've been extremely busy the last year and a half, and congratulations to everything you've accomplished. I wish everyone could hear your presentation because I had no idea, and I consider myself fairly well-informed, but I had no idea. So it would be really great, maybe if the banner could produce or, um, publish some sort of a, um, a really in-depth article about your accomplishments. I think they, it would be, um, space well-spent in the banner. Um, I have a couple of questions. Are there any other organizations in Bennington County that do anything with, to help our homeless population, or are you kind of it?
Well, when you're talking about shelter, we are the only ones. Um, when you're talking about, um, other, um, agencies that support, um, you know, homeless individuals and families, we work very closely. Part of our mission is to collaborate, so, um, we work, uh, closely with, um, state and local and federal agencies all over the county. Um, but we are the only ones that offer emergency shelter.
So someone, a homeless person in Manchester would somehow figure out how to get themselves to Bennington?
Yeah, I mean, that, that is something that we're, uh, another challenge. I mean, we can talk all night about the challenges that we face, um, but the, one of the challenges is, um, transportation. We don't have a shelter in Manchester. Um, could we use one maybe during a hundred and eighty-day period, that, that block that I keep talking about in the winter? Um, we served a total of thirty-two so far this year from Manchester, um, or the Northshire. Um, and it is tricky for us to get them down here, um, so we, we do have to kind of, um, work on some transportation stuff. I mean, sometimes we'll have volunteers go pick them up and bring them down to us. Ultimately, the services are here. Um, they'll be better served in our agency than they will at a motel, so the idea is to get them down here one way or another. Um, but that is definitely an issue that we're dealing with because we are countywide.
Right.
Every time I speak in Manchester, um, that subject does come up. There, there are, uh, quite a few people up there that would like to see our presence more up there.
Do surrounding towns that don't have any kind of a facility, do they financially support the Bennington County Co- they do?
Yeah.
Okay, that's great.
With the exception of Manchester, but hopefully that'll be different this year. We will be up, um, in that area petitioning, um, to, to get on the ballot.
Great.
Um, they were on the, the Coalition was on the ballot at one point. Um, they fell off the ballot, uh, about two or three years ago when the Coalition was dealing with some financial issues. Um, I work, um, very hard to make our presence known and change the brand in Manchester so that we can have a conversation with the select board up there. Um, I did not, uh, ask to be on the ballot last year just because I didn't think that we had proven ourselves in that, in that area. Um, I feel very confident this year that the work that we put in up there, we can get on the ballot and, and get funding from Manchester, but we do receive funding from every other town.
Great. I have two other really quick questions. I hope they're quick. Um, children, what happens to their school situation? Do they constantly have to be changing schools? Do they stay in one school even though they, when they're living at one of the shelters, they may technically not be in that district?
Well, that's one of the things I think the federal government has right. Um, they have the McKinney, McKinley-Vento Act, and part of that, um, talks about, um, keeping students in the schools, um, that they are in, enrolled in, um, while they're homeless. So in the event that we have someone, um, living in our, our family shelter who goes to school, say at Burn Burton, um, transportation accommodations will be made so that they can stay there. That's one of the only stable things in their lives. Um, so, um, it's really important that we keep them, um, from going from school to school.
And my last question was, um, you mentioned, I'm sure you apply for many grants, but you mentioned, I guess it was the federal grant or the, maybe for the state? Is that something you have to apply for every year? Every year? Okay.
Thanks.
That's all I have.
And they're really strict with, you know, um, the, how we, um, um, operate. We have to go by guidelines that are stipulated in the grant, um, and they do check on us. I mean, once a month I meet with them on a regular basis. They're coming down to take a look at the new property. Um, new programming has to be run by them first. Um, they are really, um, excited about what's going on in, in Bennington. Another reason why we got such an increase in funding this year. Um, so, but everything changes. I mean, the climate, uh, in Washington moving forward, um, could easily have, um, a strong impact on what we're doing in Bennington for homeless.
Thank you.
Yeah. I think we're, we're all just very grateful to hear what you're doing and to hear the structures you've put in place. Could you talk about a couple of things? Number one, what's your sense of the extent of homelessness in our neighboring counties? Let's say Rutland County and, and Wyndham, uh, what's, what's the level there compared to here?
Um, it is pretty, uh, it is different all over the state. Um, we are, you know, you go to Brannenborough, they have a, um, a significant, um, homeless issue. Um, and it's hard telling why that is over there, but, um, their, their numbers are much higher than ours. In fact, they try to, um, send some of their, their individuals, um, that they serve over here. A lot of times we can't handle them because we don't have the capacity to. Um, but we're really focused on, I will tell you that one of the points I meant to make earlier that I forgot to is ninety-nine percent of the individuals that we serve this past year are from Bennington County. They stay here, they're from here, um, they have family here, and that's what we, that's who we're really focused on, um, supporting. Um, if someone comes, say, from another town who, the first thing that we ask them is, um, "What is your intent? Do you want to establish here? Do you want to move here?" We're not going to be the, the welcoming committee that doesn't welcome people because they have no intention of staying, but what we will do is make it very clear that, um, if you're coming here and you need something to eat, you, we can help you out, but, um, our goal is to help people get established in, in the area. Um, Rutland has a really high homeless, uh, rate as does, um, Burlington. I would say that we're probably fourth in line, um, with the amount of homeless individuals that we have, and that's based on how many shelters serve and an estimate of who, um, is out there that, um, was not getting services. And that doesn't even count those who are on the borderline homeless, um, um.
Just one, one question. Um, and you struck a nerve with me. If you had to assign one common denominator with the people that you serve, what would it be? Is it wages?
Low, low wage and high housing costs. Simple example.
Yeah. Are you already seeing grant sources drying up, or what's, what's your sense right now?
I don't want to jinx it. Um, the Coalition has been, um, doing great with, um, grants. Um, I don't want to, I don't want to.
You may have already jinxed it.
So far, uh, this quarter, uh, we're doing well.
I think, I think you're, you're doing a brilliant thing, and when I, when I heard financial literacy, I just, wow, this is, this is, this is a tool that helps people survive and, and move on. How did you hook that up and how did, how did that come about?
Well, I'll give a couple of plugs. Um, first plug is to the lightning jar because that is where I work, um, out of. Um, that, um, space has allowed me to, um, make some relationships with other businesses and, and so on and so forth. Um, that space is powered by the Vermont State Credit Union, Vermont State Employees' Credit Union. Um, so walking through there every day and having that conversation, we found that, um, the credit union has, um, a vested interest in programming like ours. So not only did they give us, um, the, um, the financial literacy program, they also gave us ten thousand dollars in a grant. That's new money for us. Um, so it's those types of partnerships that have been developed, um, that I continue to develop. Um, so when we got a chance to sit down to brainstorm how the credit union could get involved, I immediately said, um, "Let's teach our folks how to balance, um, a checkbook, how to manage a checkbook, um, how to, um, to understand what credit actually means and, uh, put them on a path to ownership and what that looks like, or homeownership." Um, and, um, when you have great debt, how to consolidate and move it down. So they work with, um, um, uh, credit counselors to, to get, you know, those individual plans in place, but, um, so it's really just, uh, us beating the, the ground and developing , uh, relationships and, and, because we couldn't afford any of this, um, really, we really depend on the generosity of the community, and, and Bennington is, um, certainly generous. And I'm, and it's really difficult in our standpoint because we're also, um, um, competing with the Little League and the wrestling team. And every other agency in town that wants to, to raise some money, so, um, I mean, it is, it is tricky, but.
Thank you. Gene.
Thank you, Chris. Um, so I'm just wondering if you could talk a little bit, as you, as you transition families or individuals out of the homeless shelter into, um, into their own place, does it feel like there are sufficient resources in this community in terms of affordable housing for individuals to move into? Is that a stumbling block or are there other things that?
It is. Yeah, it's, it's, our biggest hurdle is to find, um, sustainable housing. Um, so, um, we do have an aftercare program, uh, so when folks do move out of our facility, we follow them for about six months just to kind of make sure that their bills are paid and their apartments are clean and, and, um, they, their relationship with their landlord is, is still positive. Um, I mean, all of this is, um, it, there are a few times when, you know, things kind of fall through the cracks, um, and, you know, people aren't, um, you know, putting forth the effort, but that's one of the things that we really hone in on is empowering the folks that we, um, serve. So when we're running into an issue with housing, uh, we do depend in some circumstances on, uh, various subsidies, um, that the state offers, Section Eight, um, VRS, which is Vermont Rental Subsidy, um, which is a new program where it allows for subsidies for up to a year, and case management is mandatory. So for instance, if one of our, um, uh, families moves out of Thatcher House and receives a VRS, um, then my case managers will work with them for the next year, um, and then hopefully by then they'll be able to, to maintain it on their own. Um, so the, the challenges that we face are decent apartments, um, affordable apartments, and, uh, wages. I mean, you can't, you can't, um, expect, um, a family of three to live off of, uh, ten dollars an hour or forty hours a week, um, without any subsidy. So we do try to connect those who qualify for subsidies, and that does help the process a little bit. Um, where we really struggle is that individual who will end up in a, um, small efficiency apartment, uh, because that's what they can afford and they don't qualify for subsidies, so. I mean, the, the idea here for us is we, we would much rather choose a non-subsidized household or an individual than connect them with the services, but let's face it, the services are there for a reason, and the idea is to create a culture where you are taking that subsidy when you need it and move off of it when you can.
Thank you.
You know, Chris, it's great, uh, to hear you talk about this, and it really is, uh, an inspiration, as Jim and others have said. Thank you very much for your hard work, and I recognize that it's probably very incremental. It seems like you've gone through a surge in the last year, and it's amazing to think that you somehow managed to take on nine, nine employees or more. What was it, in, in one year? Ten employees?
Yep.
With that smaller budget increase, but, um, it's, it's, uh, the generality is the sort of notion of localized and...
and hand-up and the idea of graduation and, you know, your notions about collaboration, those are all really great, and that's, that's what I love to hear about. Just dipping briefly low into the, into the numbers for a second. When you say 175 households are served, what, what could you ever hope for in a graduation rate? You know, what of, of the 175 households, what's a realistic number of, of people that you could help out during the course of a year?
Well, 175 households is about a 60% success rate. So there are several who did not complete the program. So if you look, when we first started, our success rate was 37%, and now we're pushing 60% success rate. So when I look at that 175 households, we're not up to capacity yet for staffing. So you look at that number based on eight employees and four of us are full-time. To me, that's a huge success rate. But knowing that there are still folks who fall through the cracks for whatever reason, that just gives us that motivation to, to work a little harder. When I increase the, the number of staff, staffing, and we're full-fledged with the programming, I anticipate that 60% being significantly higher. My goal is 90%, but we'll see how that works out. I am a dreamer.
That's great. That's great. Keep dreaming. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Chris, thank you for coming tonight. I just don't want it lost in the irony of this is November. You know, it's a month of appreciation and Thanksgiving, and we certainly can give thanks to you and also Charlie Dingo at our last meeting because he also talked about poverty having no face and homelessness having no face. And you've really brought it so that there is a face for our community.
Well, I'm certainly willing to come back and give you an update. And once we are open, I'll extend an invite for you guys to come down and take a walkthrough of the new facility.
Good.
And also, while I have the mic and the camera here, tomorrow is Giving Tuesday, and the coalition is gladly accepting donations tomorrow. So if you are so inclined, you can visit our website or our Facebook page and give us a donation.
We have a question from the audience. Just.
Really quickly, Keith wrote of the banner, wrote a pretty good story, Joe Falcon Bennington, three weeks ago, pretty in-depth. And, you know, with all this new state funding and nine or 10 more employees, can you tell me what the percentage of the overall budget is used for in terms of administrative compared to programs?
Yep.
And then also, if you can just follow up with, what is the policy of accepting cash donations after 5:00? You know, if someone comes up to you and gives you $150, is there a policy and what that might be? A few people have reached out to me from reading the story on Facebook, and they were just curious about.
Yeah.
Good question. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll start with that question. We are open 24 hours a day now. So there is a paid staff member ready and willing to take any donations. Ultimately, they come through my hands with the accountant. But I also carry a square with my iPhone, so if someone does want to use their credit card while running into me at the grocery store, I'm gladly accept the donation I do. There isn't an official policy, and I'm glad that you kind of brought that up because there wasn't a lot of official policies, period. And we are in the process of totally restructuring our policy. That might be something that we take a look at. I'm using a lot of other shelters across the country as examples for, for policies, and I haven't run into that one yet, but I'll certainly be open to it.
Your other question was the percentage of the budget for, you know, last year, the year before that compared to this coming year, used for administrative because with 13 employees now coming along on paychecks. So what is the percentage going to the programs?
So are you talking, yeah, so there's, so two different line items. It's, our new figure for staffing is about $200,000 of a $471,000 budget. Our programming is about $161,000. We have been able to, I can actually get those figures, I thought I had brought them with me. So the rest of it is operations. So we have it broken down into payroll, programming, and operations. But the $471,000 is, shows a pretty big increase with payroll. I mean, my goal is to make sure that my employees are all making $15 an hour. That is almost hard to do for businesses, let alone nonprofits, but I do not want any of my, my employees to face homelessness because they're, they're not being paid a percentage. We're not there yet. We're almost there. We're a couple of dollars away, but at some point within the next year or so, we will be at least $15 per person. That's hard to do.
How many are full-time persons?
Four of us.
Four of us?
So I have a full-time case manager, a full-time shelter manager, myself, and a property manager, the rest of them.
So 11 part-time? 11 part-time?
There will be, yeah. And we also work with trained volunteers to kind of supplement the income. If we had to go full-on with our, our staffing, we would increase that number significantly. So we do supplement with volunteers.
Are you looking for anybody to, to hire? Would you like to talk about that here tonight for whatever?
Yeah, we're, right now, we are looking for a full-time family housing case manager.
And what would that first be?
What's that?
What would that first be?
So basically, the, their role would be to work directly with the families in the family programming and the unlocking recovery. They meet on a regular basis, they get connected with services, they get the supports that they need to move on, onto a permanent housing, and then they follow them for the next six months.
What would the requisite skills set?
I look for at least a bachelor's degree.
Maybe we should get into that. I know, this is very interesting, but, but let's, let's move on.
I do have it posted on Facebook. So you can certainly get that. I hope I answered your question. I, I did kind of want to mention that, too, that the banner has actually been really good to us this whole year with, I think there'll be an article out tomorrow because we have an event coming up that they're working on, and hopefully this feed name will be in the paper, too. But, I mean, you're looking at the development director, the HR director, the marketing and PR guy, I mean, we all have a bunch of different hats, so it's hard to get the word out.
Thank you very much.
So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks. Stu, your manager's report.
Yeah, I don't have any action items for you tonight. Perhaps you did notice on the warrant that, that we passed around to you, we've turned over some $407,000 to the Bennington Rural Fire District, which is the tax money we collect for them. The Bennington School District received just over 5.3 million. Mount Anthony received 6.9 million. And under statute, we are required to turn over the monies we have collected within 10 days of the collection due date.
Could you, just a minute? Hey, Mike, before you leave? Just since I saw Mike sort of sliding out the door. Last day of the citizen survey, could you just bring us up to date on that? I'm sorry, Stu, I just wanted to.
That's all right.
That's fine. Happy to just report last day is Wednesday by the end of the day, and as of this morning, we had 491 respondents, so we'll certainly break the 500. There's a couple of duplicates, so we'll weed those out as we put together the numbers.
Most electronic, or were most paper?
Yeah. I would say, that's, I should say, 491 electronic and about five or six by paper so far. But for everybody out there, Wednesday, end of day, is the last day.
And recapping, your reconciliation will be what sometime?
So we'll look to pull the numbers, and we have an AmeriCorps Vista working in our office, so she'll help create the, the presentation for the select board, which we hope to do sometime in December.
Great. Thanks very much. I got to meet.
No, that's fine. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Stu.
Oh, that's all right. And I was just going to finish this up with, we, we are required by law to turn over whatever monies we've collected within 10 days of the due date. The remaining monies must be turned over no later than, I think it's March 30th, the year following. But we had a relatively good collection time. Delinquency running just about 5%, which is pretty standard, right after taxes are due. We expect that to drop relatively quickly. We generally end up in the range of 3% to 4% that we carry forward. So, and that's, that's my manager's report.
Great. Other business?
I don't have anything.
Around my mobile.
No. Michael. Um, good.
No other business, although I would like to compliment you on bringing Chris in, and I think we've talked about it a little bit, but I hope we can do that for maybe all of the agencies that are going to be on the ballot this year.
That's the hope and the plan, maybe not to have as long a discussion, but really, since the individual organizations are seeking town support, it's a great way for them to be exposed to the, the public so that they're working it out for March. Because, you know, there are a number of agencies that look to and need the support of the community, and this is one way of doing it. The other, that survey is really important to complete. We've got to, a schedule for the December meeting, and we're talking about the 19th.
Yeah, December 19th. We normally meet on the 12th, which is the second Tuesday. I'm recommending that we meet on the 19th rather than the day after Christmas. And we would do it probably in the conference room at the town offices, warrants and other business only. We wouldn't load that agenda with a lot of things, although we may invite one of the agencies to come in and give us a brief presentation.
6 o'clock, Stu?
Yes.
So our two meetings are the 12th and then the 19th?
Yes. That would be the hope. And Michael had an idea that he shared that we might just throw out for discussion relative to.
Take it away.
Community forum, rather than having an agenda, agenda-specific, that we invite the community in somewhere around the holiday, maybe a bit after, just because everyone's schedule, just to have a, basically, a general discussion with the select board about things that are on your mind that you might have talked about in the response to the survey.
I think I have an appropriate phrase for it, but I don't.
No, it won't be. We won't, we're looking for.
Keep that to yourself.
It's constructive discussion, but we, I think the select board will try to find a way to provide some, if not entertainment, but some.
Some refreshment.
Some minimal refreshment. More light, yep. So that we can invite the community in for, you know, just to talk, you know, without a, a full-frame discussion. So we'll probably do away with the, with the pews and just sit around and have an open discussion. It'll be a meeting, so we'll have an open meeting compliance, but also give the community an opportunity not to have to go up and face the mic, but just to find out.
Why do we say, why do we say it's the community's agenda rather than the select board's agenda?
Why don't we say that? We will be, that's how it'll be marketed. So have that in mind. If it sounds like a bad idea, speak before we, we schedule it. Does that make sense to you?
Stay tuned.
Good. And I'm still making sure that Jim sits right next to me during the discussion.
So I can take the bullets?
No, no, no. You can, lower profile. We do have a need to go into an executive session on a matter, personnel, that is not appropriate for public dialogue because of, it would be inappropriate to, for the individual and individuals involved. So I'd like a motion to move into executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We were going into executive session after five-minute recess.
Amen.